And Tourism Committee. It is 9:09. Whatever that means. Heard a lot of people, they said on the radio, a lot of people were gonna be saying I do today. Why would this be a good day? Why would any day be a good day to get married? But, okay, why don't we start? I'm still waiting for Councilmember Tom LaBonge and Councilmember Bill Rosendahl to show up, but I think we need to get started because it is 10 till 9 and we have a very, very full agenda today. So, I was thinking without objection, who can object? We were gonna take items, I was gonna take item 3 and 4 and 7 on consent, if that's okay? Yeah, really, speak up now. So, we'll do that without objection. If one of them wants to pull that when they come, I would certainly let them do that. So, why don't we start with item 4? Item 1.
Under item 1, the mayor submits for council approval his reappointment of Mr. Joseph Radisic to the Board of Harbor Commissioners for a term ending June 30, 2014. The city Ethics Commission staff have reviewed and reported to the council on Mr. Radisic's statement of economic interests.
Mr. Radisic.
Would you like me to sit?
Yes, why don't you just sit right there?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Councilwoman, hi.
Good morning, Commissioner.
One at 1 here.
Yes. Tell us, do you have anything you wanted to say to start out on why you're agreeing to do this again?
Yeah, well, I'm agreeing to do it, I think, because, well, I'm a little less nervous than I was four years ago. That's a matter of fact, but I think that the port is, in a lot of ways, moving along a good path, and, you know, I think I've gained experience over the last four years, and I'm honored to keep up that service.
Good. Well, let me just ask you some of the questions. Obviously, one of the big issues last time was since the charter specifies that at least one commissioner be from the local area, that was an issue last time, so we just wanna make sure you're a local resident in the harbor area. Is that true?
Yes, I am.
Okay, good. What do you, as that local person on the harbor commission, you know, you're supposed to be sort of the local voice of the community, how do you feel like you've done in that role with the issues that we've been grappling with?
Well, I think, you know, well, there's a couple. In terms of non-revenue producing projects, I mean, as you know, you've been a part of this, we have some great projects going on right now. We have $125 million project going on in the Cabrillo Marina, and the 22nd Street Park being built as we speak. We've done the Fountain in San Pedro, and we have a big San Pedro EIR coming up at the end of the month. So, in terms of what's happening in San Pedro, not the industry I'm talking about, not the terminal operators and that stuff, but projects that benefit not only people in the harbor area, but all the Californians, we have a lot going on. As well as, you're aware of, we have the $50 million project in Wilmington being constructed right now. So, I think there's a lot of good things happening.
Let's just talk, since you brought up the waterfront EIR, a big meeting on September 29th. What's your sense of the community? What's your sense of what they're kind of feeling right now about it, hoping for? There's been a little controversy with the Outer Cruise Terminal. As the community's representative, what are you sensing? Have you been out there talking to the community? What are you hearing?
I think it depends on what part of the community you're talking about. I mean, there's a lot of different opinions in the harbor area. If you read, you know, San Pedro Magazine, I mean, there were some good articles over the last week on what people call real San Pedrins and what people call, you know, obstructionists. So, I listen to everybody, you know. I'm gonna formulate my own opinion based on what I think's best. I feel I have a good connection to many people in San Pedro. I have deep roots there, so, and Wilmington too, for that matter, so.
So, you think you're getting a good sense of what overall the public interest is in the waterfront?
Yeah, I think the most important thing is people wanna see, good morning, Councilman. People wanna see things happen, you know, there's gonna be some controversy, of course, everybody's not gonna agree on every element of the project, there's no way, but overall, I think people will be happy to see something built. And, you know, we're moving down that path as we speak. There's construction going on from 22nd Street all the way through Wilmington.
I think you're absolutely right, and I mean, that's certainly something I've learned very quickly, is you can't make everybody happy. So, at the end of the day, you've kind of gotta do what you think is right and best. Let me ask you about another issue, kinda sensitive, but you are a commissioner, you have certainly a great role in ILWU. That's the other kind of hat you wear, which actually makes you a really, I think, you know, important voice on the commission. However, you've had to sort of recuse yourself on a number of votes when it related to some major issues. I even, I think the Trade PAC EIR, you had to recuse yourself from. How are you balancing that? You still feel like, you know, you're effective commissioner?
Well, first of all, I, you know...
And do you get advice, is the city attorney the one that's telling you to recuse yourself? Or how is that?
Well, I think that the city attorney takes a very conservative viewpoint on these things, you know, as far as their concern, instead of challenging things. This has been what's happened in the past, they just say, "Recuse yourself." I don't necessarily agree with the recusals that I've had. So, with that being said, yeah, my role as international vice president, I think, in their opinion, created some problems, but I did not seek reelection, and I will be out of office at the end of the month, actually, so.
So, that issue won't be, you don't think that'll be an issue as you move forward?
Morning.
Good morning. Let's welcome Councilmember Bill Rosendahl.
Morning, Mr. Harrow.
Morning.
Morning, Governor.
Christ, there's a mob scene out there, you can't get on the elevator.
We're on item 1.
Oh, good.
So, you think that issue will kind of go away?
Well, when I started four years ago on the commission, I was a steady employee, longshoreman, at one terminal in the Port of Los Angeles, and I did not have any problems with refusal, other than issues that had to do with that one terminal, so.
Okay.
I'm not anticipating problems.
Okay, well, that's good. I just have to bring this up, just, I feel completely okay about it, but last time you were here, you were sort of very worried about some of the tact I was taking in terms of the channel deepening project. You even suggested that I might be, you know, jeopardizing the future of the port by trying to work out a compromise, you know, avoid lawsuits, but I think when we look back on it, it was a great opportunity that we really, I think, at the end, came together, we came up with a compromise that I think, you know, prevented lawsuits from happening, let the channel deepening go forward, and I think we might, if it works out, bring back, you know, the shipbuilding industry to the port. So, I just hope that you feel that as we look back on that, that in fact, we did end up working together and came out what I think was a better solution.
We did. I think we have a little difference of opinion on that, but, you know, I think that the environmental documents, what I'm being told, coming out from the port are defensible, and I don't think we should, I don't know, for lack of better words, kowtow to everybody that threatens a lawsuit. I think at some point, we're gonna have to, you know, show some courage and say, "Okay, we believe in the environmental impact reports we're putting out." We don't always have to negotiate, and I think the fact that we're negotiating all the time on every EIR is really doing a disservice to the reputation of the port. It's a difference of opinion, I think, that we have, but, you know, I understand where you're coming from, and maybe I'm wrong, you have a lot more experience than I do.
Yeah, well, I just think when these appeals come to the city council, then we do have kind of a different role than maybe you do, to try to see if we can bring people together to better the port for everybody.
You're in charge, I'm just a volunteer.
Make a note of that. Let me just ask you one more thing, and then see if you've got it. One of the, as we move forward with the future of the port, there is concern about maybe the number of fees that we're imposing on containers as they come to the Port of Los Angeles. Port of Seattle is actually doing a marketing ad, I've seen it, where it says, "No fees, you know, no infrastructure fees, you know, come to us, we have zero fees." What do you think? I mean, are we going in the right direction with our courage for trying to improve the infrastructure, trying to have a cleaner port? Where do you think we are? Are we going in the right direction with those fees, or is this really a problem?
I think there's a misperception with the fees as it stands right now. There's about four fees out there, one's the clean truck fee, but you know that if I'm a cargo owner and I hire a clean truck, I'm not paying the fee. Or if I hire a clean truck and I go at night, I'm not paying that fee, or I'm not paying the pier pass fee. So, the infrastructure fee has not been implemented, and the other fee is the Alameda Corridor active fee, $17, which the port can't do anything about, that's already in place. So, I think there's a misperception out there, and it's been started by other ports, other competitors, that are trying to steal business away from the Port of Los Angeles by painting it as a port that's too expensive. But I will say this, in terms of where we're at right now, we all know volumes are way down, which mean work in the port is way down. What the companies are able to charge to ship a box now went from like $2,200 a year ago to like $900 now, so they're making way less money. So, you have revenues going down, and you have expenses going up. The concern that I have is the port spending a lot of money, you know, these waterfront projects, for example, the timing of it really couldn't be worse, because we're spending a lot of money on non-revenue producing projects at a time when the revenues are going down. So, I think we really have to be responsible and keep an eye on these things, because, I mean, you know, when you lose business in the Port of Los Angeles, these are high-paying, high-paying jobs, they're not minimum wage jobs, and, you know, it's very important.
Do you think we can do a better job of counteracting this, these marketing campaigns from other ports, to be more competitive and kind of set the record straight? You feel like we've done a good job of that?
I don't think we've done a great job with that. I think that we are, we're starting to, we've had discussions about coming up with a counter PR strategy.
Right. I think that's good, I think that's really important right now, and I'd love to see you sort of, you know, champion that.
I am gonna champion that, because as my role as international vice president, I know the competition between the ports, 'cause I represented, in the past tense, all the ports.
Right, but I don't think that message is getting out, how you just articulated it.
I agree.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Yeah, when you say all the ports, you're talking from CTEC in Seattle all the way down?
All the way down.
All the way down.
Even Vancouver.
Even Vancouver, and then also potential ports in Mexico.
Or the East Coast.
Or the East Coast as well. I think it is imperative, I would love to see some discussion, I just read the Business Journal this morning, where they talked about being unfriendly, et cetera, like that. It's important to look right at our own front door and make sure that, I've been here 35 years, I was here before the fax machine, and before the cellphone, and everything else, and everybody thought they had a business, and before FedEx, have a business on Wilshire. I worked for John Ferraro. Wilshire was the commercial street of Los Angeles, and then the fax came along, and FedEx came along, and all of a sudden, you could be anywhere and still do business. The same could happen to anything, so to be sharp on those issues. And I do hear what you're saying about your core business first. Core business is real important, but it's important at the same time to develop what is a neighborhood. I saw yesterday promotion of Long Beach's Lobster Festival, which you just had your lobster festival.
No, no, we haven't had it yet.
When are you having it?
It's coming up September 20...
Yeah, but it had a whole different thing, but if you look back to Long Beach, and you look back to what, you grew up in San Pedro. Long Beach was a whole different frontage, the commercial redevelopment on Ocean Avenue, it's changed the face of Long Beach, and that has taken 40 years, and even more, 'cause I remember as a boy scout going down to the pike and trying to, you know, hit the picket fence wood of the Cyclone Racer and all that, but I never got a tattoo. The only place you get a tattoo is at the pike back then, now you get them everywhere. Anyway, core business is real important, satisfying the representative who has the long-range vision, as you said, is real important, 'cause I share in that vision, and the only thing I would ask, two things to look at, I don't know how much freight moves on Sunday, how much freight moves on Sunday or Saturday?
A lot.
A lot?
Yeah.
But how much more, percentage-wise, to the weekend?
You know, the shipping schedules change all the time. Right now, there's a lot more work, I think, on the weekends than there is during the weekdays.
Would you rather see stuff move on train or truck?
Train, preferably.
Uh-huh, right, and...
Put stuff on the train, go into the local market.
Right, I got it, we got a tremendous local market in Southern California and about Arizona on that issue there. But at the same time, to look at those issues, as well as it relates to train, and also to try as best as possible, 'cause it is a very difficult time, you know, and the one question, what, does the Long Beach Commission have anything different in governance that you would like to see Los Angeles Harbor Commission have?
And don't say that they don't report to the city council.
Why don't, well, that's one. I think Long Beach is a different animal, it's a little less political, I think they're kind of separated from the city.
But they're also separated...
There's neighborhood councils and...
But they're also separated by the Los Angeles River, they're separated by geographically, there's no residents, there's no, the Long Beach Freeway goes into the town, it doesn't, and then there's a port on the right, it's not like the Harbor Freeway, which should be the San Pedro Freeway, goes right into San Pedro on that. So, it'd be interesting to look at that, in case there's anything in the future that we should discuss too. Anyway, I support you, thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn.
You know what, and I'll let you ask a few questions, it just made me think about something, when you talked about, you know, more work on the weekend, I know we've cut back, or Pier Pass, I believe, has cut back one of their off-peak days or nights, but I'm following up on your first comment about, you know, you don't pay the fee if you move at off-peak hours. So, maybe that's something we try to keep pushing, is not to drop the off-peak schedule, that we're actually giving the shipping companies a break, the cargo owners a break, when we keep those, you know, I wanna see more off-peak hours being available as opposed to less, so maybe that would be something that you could push.
Okay.
Morning, Joe.
Morning, Councilman.
How long have you been on the commission?
It's been four years.
So, you got another five years. What was the biggest challenge in those first four years, and what do you see as what you really wanna get done over the next five, you?
Well, I think there's a big learning curve when you start. I mean, even though I had a lot of knowledge of the port and how it works, I mean, in terms, first of all, when we started, you had this big thing with the environment and all that, which, you know, I didn't know the law and really how that works, so that was a big education. But you had other people on the commission, you know, David Freeman, Jola Mendoza, who were experts, so that was important. And then, you know, these two waterfront projects, I mean, you know, that's been a priority, believe it or not. When I first got in there, I mean, there was a changeover going with the administration, looking to hire a new executive director, and that probably, you know, knocked off a considerable amount of time, or stalled things.
Right.
But I think, you know, I think we're moving in the right direction in terms of that, and it was a priority, you know, we identified these elements of the waterfront project that weren't controversial, and we moved forward with them, and then at the same time, going on the same track, getting ready for the big EIR, which involves Ports of Call, which in my opinion, is really the whole, you know, it's the whole shebang on this thing.
I agree.
Ports of Call.
Glad to hear you say that.
Because people wanna go down, and just like when I was a kid, you go down there and have a drink and hang out, and if you fix Ports of Call, you put something down there, a lot of the, a lot of the rumbling is gonna go away, in my opinion.
I agree, I hear that everywhere I go, that's, we can talk about all the elements of the waterfront, but the majority of people relate to Ports of Call, and what they think it was, and what they hope it will become. You're absolutely right, sorry.
So, that's gonna be part of your focus going forward?
Yeah, we, well, we're, like, I don't think you were here, we're having a big EIR meeting on this, on the San Pedro waterfront at the end of the month, so that's gonna be a big thing. Continuing to try to attract business, for me, is important, especially in these bad economic times.
Right.
So, when I started, things were so, things were great, and we didn't speak in those terms, and we had the luxury of having all these grand ideas, and, you know, we'll spend money over here, over there, it's not like that now. We have to tighten our belt, in my opinion.
Well, thank you for putting four years in and willing to put another five years, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Hahn, just one last quick thing, have you done any work with the port with any of the universities, whether it's Long Beach State, Dominguez, UCLA, or somebody I see to study some socioeconomic business plan for Ports of Call? Has there been any of that done? You know, from five to time, not a consultant, but I'm a, you know, wide range.
Actually, we've had, well, actually, we've had a couple of looks at that, both by ULI, Urban Land Institute.
Oh, good, Urban Land, good, all right, good.
One in 2002, and then most recently, they came out and took a look at it. There's usually a kind of a cynical, negative view from those types, that we're not sure that the market is there, the demographics are there, but I always disagree with them.
Yeah, well, people drive to the beach.
I think people wanna be by the water, I think it is clearly an attraction, and I think the fact that we have a working port out there, we have a main channel that no other, actually, port town has, that we really have the elements that I think would attract tourism, and we know tourism is now, sadly to say, surpassed goods movement as the number one industry in LA.
The only thing too, I support the red car, and I will vote for you if you try to assure me you're gonna get a big Ferris wheel down there, at least for the summer months next year, like they have at Navy Pier in Chicago. Anybody opposed to that in this room? You got any nanos of the vote there, Commissioner?
We have an EIR for a Ferris wheel.
No, you don't, no, you don't.
Okay, before we confirm you, I believe we have one public speaker on this item, Arnold Sacks. And then I will take a motion to...
So moved, Ben.
Excuse me?
One minute.
You want me to sit here, or?
Yeah.
You have one minute.
I said one.
Yeah, good.
One minute.
Good morning. Just curiously, there was an article in the LA Times regarding LA Port urged to stop lobbying over clean truck program. What's this sense of feeling about the federal law that considers truckers who haul freight at the port to be independent owner/operators who have no collective bargaining rights and can't join forces to pay, to raise their pay rates? The port wants to change that federal law. Are you paying attention to what's going on with this so-called Living Wage Act that the city wants to enact, and how ridiculous that is, that it eliminates insurance coverage? What would these drivers do for insurance when the government, the federal government wants people to have insurance? And what's your, I know you mentioned something about fees, but what about a fee on the empty containers that are stacked all over Wilmington? And you mentioned something about preferring rail traffic over truck traffic. What's the status of ever getting the Alameda Corridor, which one was first proposed, was supposed to go to the waterfront, but still stops short of Pacific Coast Highway?
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, I'll take a motion, okay, it's been moved.
Seconded.
Seconded, that we recommend the reconfirmation and the reappointment of Joe Radisic to the harbor commission. Good luck.
Thank you, thank you, everybody.
Okay, and you'll be in council today.
Thank you, good luck to you.
You'll be in council today, okay. Okay, let's move on quickly to item 2.
Under item 2, the Board of Harbor Commissioners submits for approval the First Amendment to a contract with Moffett and Nickel for engineering design and related services for the Cabrillo Way Marina Phase 2 project. The amendment would extend the contract from three years to a total term of six years, expiring in October 2012.
Good morning, council members.
Good morning.
This is a three-year time extension, no additional money. Moffett and Nickel was a designer of the Cabrillo Way Marina, which is under construction, and we wanna have them available to us during the construction period.
Okay, obviously, you know, this is something that I've also been waiting for, and I think the community has for long too, is this Phase 2 of the Marina, it was scheduled to break ground, I think, like, six years ago, and there was some delay for a variety of reasons. One of the issues I was gonna ask is, I know an RFP went out for retail developers at this marina, and there was no response. Can you tell us what, why you think that was?
Yes, we did send out an RFP, because there will be some development opportunities within this marina. We had, we've been in contact with developers who've expressed an interest in Ports of Call. Several of them have indicated an interest in Ports of Call and the Cabrillo Marina, and so, we were gonna originally package both together, but we thought we would send out the RFP for the Marina development as a trial balloon on its own, and it was not successful. So, we will now package that with the RFP for the Ports of Call.
Do you think that they just weren't sure, like, that this marina was ever gonna get built, or what else?
No, it was out when we were under construction.
Okay.
So, it was rather a recent RFP. I think it's a combination of, you know, economic conditions, probably, and the fact that we do know, in one particular case, that one of the developers is waiting for the package to come out.
Right.
With Ports of Call, so...
Right, because, I mean, I can still envision, obviously, some retail that is associated with the boating world, but I also am picturing a few more restaurants out there, a few more shops out there. I mean, again, I've visited beautiful marinas all over, and they usually always have that aspect. People do like to go sit out and look at the beautiful boats that will be there.
You know, I think this next time, we have to make the effort to go out and meet with restaurant owners and get them down there, you know, ourselves, I mean, that will really make a difference, so.
Right, I also think with the 22nd Street Park there, you're gonna have a lot of families coming down there, and I think they would just love to then walk across the street and do some shopping, or eat in some restaurants. I think the potential and the opportunity is perfect. Again, it's just a natural, so I would hope that we do just what you just said, and I'd be glad to help you with that.
Okay, that'd be great.
I've also been hearing, you know, that's part of my job, is I get feedback from the boating community about the Marina, and I just wanna make sure that as we move forward with the development, there is some vehicle for the boating community to continue to have input about the Marina design, stuff that's going in. Are we, do you have a good way to do that?
Yeah, we did that outreach in the design phase, and I haven't heard any issues come to me lately. I think that's been going on, we also have been working with yacht clubs, too, who also have, you know, there's, that have a space in the Marina, so...
Okay, I just wanna make sure that we're still doing that.
Yeah, and I will.
Those people are gonna use it.
Right, I will confirm that.
Okay. Any questions about the Marina?
What's the telephone number of the port police?
The telephone number?
Yeah.
Well, I'll give you my number, 310-732-3456.
3456, great.
Yeah, easy to remember.
There's a group that is celebrating the memorial for 9/11, and they wanna include the port police, as the port police of New York City were also victims, so they wanted a contact, so I'll go through your office.
Oh, okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
I'll ask. Okay, thank you. Motion to approve this?
So moved.
So moved, for this agreement with Moffett and Nickel. Thank you very much.
You're very efficient, gold star.
Okay, I've been told that we need to go back, now that I have my colleagues here, on 3, 4, and 7. I was gonna take those on consent, however, I do have a card on 7, what does that mean? Can I take it on consent, or I have to hear?
We have to.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so, how about 3, 4 on consent?
So moved.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do that, and then we'll just wait till we get to 7, okay.
Item 5?
Oh, you know what? I apologize, Arnold, I have a comment on, I'm sorry, 2.
Is that mine?
Arnold Sacks, item 2.
You're right up here, Arnold.
I know, really. I know, really.
Thank you again. I just wanted to be sure on this. The Board of Harbor Commissioners, I mean, the Harbor Department is a proprietary department, subject to suggestions and not legislation of the city council. This is a, you're a design, this is a design firm? I'm just curious to know, there were some problems with the design firm at the airport and some questionable tactics used to have them authorized to run the development, the redevelopment of the Tom Bradley Terminal. Were there any problems picking this particular design firm? Was it reopened for negotiations for the second term? I heard Councilwoman Hahn said this is another three-year term that this will be, this company will be running the design for the harbor.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you for your answers.
Okay, okay, we will have approved this motion, second, and thank you very much. Let's move on to item-
Five.
Five.
Under item five, the Board of Harbor Commissioners submits for approval two separate actions regarding Traypak Incorporated at the port. One, the board approved the Fifth Amendment to Traypak's existing permit, number 552, to provide for an incentive credit to offset clean truck program fees. And two, the board approved a new permit, number 881, to supersede the existing permit and to allow Traypak to modernize and expand its container terminal and to occupy the premises for a term of 30 years. The CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval of the Fifth Amendment to the existing permit and approval of a new permit for the term of 30 years.
Okay, give us the highlights of this lease.
Okay, council members, this, for us, is a big, important item. It's a 30-year lease with Traypak. They are owned by MOL, Mitsui O.S.K. Lines, who's been, you know, calling at our port for 23 years. The lease provides for expansion and modernization of the terminal. It's the only container terminal in the Port of Los Angeles that does not have on-dock rail. So it's an 88-acre terminal. It will go to 226 acres. Another significant thing about this agreement, this is the first, what we call, cap-compliant lease. So it's the first lease in San Pedro Bay that incorporates the measures of our Clean Air Action Plan. The lease is also unusual in that we're actually lowering the rate to Traypak. We really wanted to reflect some competitive disadvantage that they had in not having an on-dock rail yard, also the fact that they'll be under construction. So the minimum annual guarantee will go to $118,000 an acre. Once the project is completed, and we'll be investing about $245 million, the minimum annual guarantee goes to $166,000 an acre for a 10% return, which is board policy. There is also a related item. It's the Fifth Amendment to the existing lease. We had to recognize that Traypak, because they didn't have on-dock rail, a lot of their customers were having to pay the clean truck fee. And so we worked out a formula on how we could compensate them for that disadvantage, and it works out to be a $37 payment per container back to them that's based on the average of the containers that go to on-dock rail from the other terminals. And that kind of put them on an equal footing with our other customers. When completed, this project will create 18,700 indirect and direct jobs when a terminal's at capacity. And we also, did I mention we have a representative here from Traypak, Frank Pizano, who's in the audience, too?
Right. Well, this is a big deal, and certainly, it's huge. There were figures being thrown around that at the total completion and throughput at Traypak would equal the number of containers that go through the Port of Oakland.
That is probably correct.
You know, and I think that, I mean, I think that's something that is so significant. And again, when we're talking about competitiveness, we're talking about what we're doing, I mean, the fact that we will be expanding Traypak will be a potential, you know, huge impact for jobs, for the economy here in LA. This is, Traypak could be our own economic stimulus package.
They are.
And I think that's important. So it's very interesting. So the incentive was about during construction mainly?
Yeah, well, there's-
And also because there was no on-dock rail, or how did the staff kind of negotiate this figure, this $37?
Well, it, you know, it really came back from a looking at all of our rates, you know. In effect, Traypak had the terminal that had the most deficiencies, and they were actually paying us the most-
Right.
-which made it difficult for them to be competitive. So, you know, every lease is a negotiation, but we recognize that. And so, in exchange for going down, you know, once this lease goes into effect, we bump them back up once the construction is finished. And so that's a motivation for us to keep this project going and get it constructed, because we want to see that increase in revenue. We need that increase in revenue.
Right.
So, you know, I think both sides thought that was a good way to deal with it, that it keeps us on the ball in terms of the construction project.
Right. And while it's sometimes hard for people to comprehend this, the fact that this is the first lease that we've done within our Clean Air Action Plan, that at completion, it will actually have reduced emissions at the port. Again, a hard concept, when you think you're expanding a terminal that will equal the throughput of the Port of Oakland, and yet, when it's completed, it will actually be, will actually have cleaner air.
Yeah.
How can you explain that?
Because, you know, our measures are really strict, and they, you know, they're just very strict measures that the cap requires of our customers. I think we have to give Traypak a lot of credit. It wasn't an easy negotiation, but they're going to be the first one out there, and, you know, I think for them, it's also, that's a competitive issue as well. They'll have to comply with a lot of things that the people that they, you know, compete with will not, so, but they stepped up, and, you know, we're real excited.
Right. One more thing, it sort of mirrors the questioning I asked of our commissioner, but obviously, it was 18 months ago that we approved the EIR, and again, I was accused of holding up progress at the port, holding up economic development, because I was working to negotiate something that would prevent lawsuits, taking this to court. I thought it was a better way to do things by negotiating a community benefits agreement so that we could move forward. So why, you know, if I was accused of holding up progress, why did it take 18 months for this lease? I mean, it's kind of surprising to me that it took so long.
Yeah, you know, actually-
And I think, you know, and I think Traypak's been frustrated. They've been on, you know, month to month for the last, like, seven years, so.
Yes.
I know people like to take out their anger on me, but it seems a little weird that it took so long to actually sign this lease. Well, what was the problem?
Yeah, you know, actually, 18 months is not uncommon for a lease of this magnitude, a 30-year agreement. As a matter of fact, Catherine and I and Commissioner Radesic went over and met with MOL, and I think, you know, we're negotiating this lease at a time where business is down, and they're, you know, committing to, you know, once we're done with our project, the rate to go back up. So it took, you know, it took our going over to meet with their home office, going to Japan, and it took a lot of back and forth to deal with, you know, some of these issues. In actuality, for a 30-year agreement, it's not that uncommon. I mean, obviously, I would love to do it quicker, because it, you know, it is unusual to have a customer of this magnitude to not be under a long-term lease, but that is really not that uncommon.
All right. Just for the record, I didn't hold it up.
Okay, no.
18 months. I think we negotiated an entire community benefits agreement, and how long? A few months?
In one long, long weekend.
Yeah, exactly. So, just for the record. No, I think this is great. It's important for the ports, important for the progress. I think this is very good, and Frank Pizano has been, I think, frustrated through all this, but we're here today to give our stamp of approval to what I think is a very good lease. It's really a win-win for all of us. Questions?
Couple of quick ones.
Okay.
30 years is a long time. Why did you decide 30?
That's fairly standard for the long-term leases with the customers, and, you know, for our perspective, the container business, that's sort of our bread and butter. The longer we can lock them in, the better it is for us. I don't know, Steve, if you want to make any other comments, or Mike, but-
That is the standard amount of time that we issue these container terminal leases for. In addition, it needs to be kept in mind that the port's investing a substantial amount in infrastructure improvements.
Right, okay. And then, in 10 years, effective date, then you do every five years compensation renegotiation. Explain that a little bit.
Well, that's actually required under the charter, that we reopen the payment, the compensation schedule, only that part every five years. We look at what the market is doing at that time, whether it's appropriate to raise the rates or not. Doesn't automatically mean that the rates go up, but pretty much, they do, usually.
The jobs, did I hear a large number of jobs?
18,000 jobs, direct and indirect, once the project's completed.
And when will it be completed?
Well, it's a series of phases. We're under construction right now. Mike, can you give me the schedule?
Completion date, we're looking at 2015 for all of the phases. The last phase is the on-dock rail, which there needs to be another rail yard relocated before we can construct that, so that is the only thing that's holding that up.
And the 18,000 jobs, all good-paying, health care, all those kinds of things? Are we looking at the compensation package for workers?
Yes, we actually identified a certain number of those that were actually, because the terminal's going from 88 acres, you know, to over 200 acres. So a lot of them are longshore jobs, and then the others are jobs that, you know, are involved in the logistics industry. So they are good-paying jobs.
Is there a project labor agreement on this?
Yes, there is.
I want to thank you, thank you both, and before you know it, 2015 will be here. Knock down the hurdles and get the jobs there. Thank you.
Very good. Okay.
So moved.
It's been moved, seconded.
Seconded.
Then we'll make this a unanimous approval of the Traypak lease. Congratulations.
Thanks, Geraldine.
Okay, item six.
Under item six, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for approval a contract with Aon Risk Insurance Services West Incorporated for owner-controlled insurance broker-of-record and administrative services for various capital construction projects at LAX, including the Tom Bradley International Terminal Reconfiguration Projects. The contract has a term of five years, and the CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval.
Yeah, he looks like he's just, yes, what would you like to tell us about this?
Good morning. I'm Wei Qi. I'm the controller for the Los Angeles World Air Force. This is Bruce Brown, Risk Manager for Lawa.
Good. So what are we looking at today?
The item before you is a five-year contract for our insurance broker-of-record for the owner-controlled insurance program that we plan to implement for all the major construction projects that will be happening at the Tom Bradley International Terminal, as well as the airfield, some airfield elements.
So they get the insurance for all the projects happening right now?
Right, the major projects. Basically, it's the Tom Bradley International-
Right.
-gates, the core-
Right.
-and then also the central utility plant, the support-
Right. And what made you go with them?
We went through an RFP process-
Uh-huh.
-and we evaluated all the potential proposers-
Right. Have they done this before?
Yes.
Okay.
They are our current broker.
They're your current ones.
That's correct.
So you're sticking with the current incumbent?
We're running OSIP right now, which is the fourth year of a five-year contract.
Right.
It will be expiring by early next year, middle of next year.
Right. Okay, questions?
No. How many, but how many claims have we had in the last, you know, three years?
Actually, our OSIP program is one of the best-performing OSIPs in the nation. Workers' comp, about maybe 15 claims total.
Uh-huh.
General liability claims, about six claims. Very, very low.
All right, keep the, good job up.
But we'll try, thank you.
Thank you.
So it's, yeah, so this is basically allows multiple customers to be grouped together into one consolidated program.
Yes.
Great idea. Very much what, like, I think we should move into someday, because what we're doing on the city council today is actually increasing our living wage so that workers can access insurance. I've always thought it would be an interesting idea to sort of have some kind of insurance that would group together a lot of those companies, a lot of their workers, under one umbrella. Be interesting. I know this is insurance, but same concept, so. I want to consult with some other people at the airport and push the idea of bringing out insurance to cover workers out there. Any other questions about this?
Nope.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, we will approve this? Seven, we have a card on seven, otherwise I was going to take it on consent, so Arnold Sacks, would you like to speak on item seven?
Yes, very quickly, item number seven deals with a lease with Continental Airlines, and I'm just curious to know if that's the same Continental Airlines that, along with several other airlines that operate in it, LAX, are all in the red, or is this the Continental Airlines that's now flying, its funding is in the black, because pretty soon, they're going to be asked to increase their fees to help pay for this ridiculous workers, what the heck?
Senior moment.
Yes, senior moment. They're going to be asked to pay for the fee, pay a fee to help, for insurance for employees that don't even work for them. I just want to make sure they have money.
Okay, thank you very much. I'll now entertain a motion?
We got one question on it.
Oh, okay.
Someone come up from Lawa on this one? Hi, how are you?
Hi, how are you?
It's great to see you. I give you credit for those three holes at the golf course.
They're under inspection, I think.
You're the one. I know, they're just going excited beyond belief. Tell me, can you give us an update on the status of cargo traffic at LAX in Ontario? I know we are in a down economy. Where are we on that whole issue?
Actually, I can't.
Good, that's a good answer. That's all you got to say.
Honesty is the best policy.
Okay.
Morning.
Hi, I'm Steve Martin, Chief Operating Officer.
Yeah, how are we doing on this cargo business?
Cargo business is actually down. It's not down as much as the passenger business, which is ironic. Some of the airlines, when we talk to them, report that the cargo business, while down, is actually keeping revenues in better than the passenger business is keeping revenues in, so.
Very good. And Ontario, are we moving forward in there?
Ontario, it's a difficult situation. There are cargo operations out there. FedEx, UPS, and others have cargo operations, but they've seen their traffic drop dramatically. They have not cut service a lot, but their willingness to start new projects is pretty limited until there's some kind of turnaround.
Is there anything we can do to support you on cargo?
We've been in active discussions with all the cargo operators about both LAX and Ontario. I think the answer is not much right now because of the economy, but I think when things turn around, I think that's when people will have something to ask us about.
Because I know that they want to make Ontario a hub for this, and whatever we can do to prepare it when the days come back again, if we could spot ours.
Right, and I think it is going to require some sense of upswing before people really can even form the ask.
Yeah, very good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Can I just ask a technical question? In your experience, do you find people complain about, A, street traffic in and around the airport, B, noise from aircraft, or C, something I'm not thinking of right now?
All of the above.
Well, I mean, I think it's changed over time. I think it's changed from 20 years ago was noise. Now that aircraft technology has improved, it's less noise, not to say that noise is not an issue, and street traffic and air quality have become the issues for airports And street traffic and air quality have become the issues for airports more than noise.
Air quality from what goes out the back of a plane?
Plane and traffic, and all the things, industrial areas around an airport.
Should a high-speed rail be built into LAX?
I don't know. I don't-
Well, come on, make a guess. Just tell me.
It'd be really pretty hard to get high-speed rail into LAX.
But what if they converted the Green Line to high-speed rail?
The right-of-ways there, I don't know if it can be high-speed in that area.
It's a great idea.
It's a technical issue, I don't know the answer to it.
Right, okay. You're following the lead of your finances. I got that, I had to ask a question. General questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
City Attorney, I can't believe they're not stopping you in check. Okay, we will approve-
Thank you.
Motion to approve, second. Let's approve that item. Thank you very much. Okay.
Thank you for the golf thing.
Item eight.
Under item eight, the Board of Airport Commissioners submits for approval a lease for office space and parking located, of premises located at 6053 West Century Boulevard, very near LAX. This would accommodate up to 350 department employees for an initial term of 10 years. The CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval of the proposed lease.
Okay, so this basically is consolidating three existing off-airport lease facilities into more efficient space. It's going to free up hangar-related space to maximize revenue. It's going to improve staff efficiencies by co-locating support group functions and codependent groups. It's going to provide a long-term space need solution for the airport police.
Yes.
And what else is good about this?
Well, I think that one of the better things about it is we just kind of lucked into an opportunity because of the cyclical low with the real estate market. We got a lease that actually ended up giving us about $12 million between residual value and the TIs. We have a phenomenal deal on this. We have a control, a cap on the controllable operating expenses, and we got a good rental rate. So, I think we just got very lucky.
Explain to us why it solves the problem with the airport police.
Right now, they are crammed into locker space and office space at 96th Street, and they, because of the rules of separating the sworn versus the non-sworn, it's very hard to configure that space so it makes sense for them. And when we finish this, we will have all new space for the non-sworn. We will be fixing the space in 96th Street for the sworn, and we're giving them all the office space they need.
So, the sworn will stay where they are?
Yes, the sworn will stay in 96th Street. The non-sworn are going to go to Admin West in a low rise.
I see. And, but are we improving their facility where they currently are?
Yes.
Because it's kind of all dilapidated.
Yeah, I know. I took a tour of it, it's pretty sad.
Yeah. Okay. But this will allow you to begin doing that?
Right.
Okay. Very good. Any questions?
Nope.
Questions?
Sounds good.
Okay. Without objection, we'll approve that item.
Thank you. Thank you.
Number nine.
Under item nine, the Board submits an authorizing resolution for the issuance of up to $700 million in airport revenue bonds to finance new capital projects at LAX, and the issuance of up to $925 million in refunding bonds. The authorizing resolution proposes the sale, that the sale of these bonds should be by private sale, utilizing a team of identified underwriters. The department's chief financial officer has submitted his report and determination that such private sale would be of benefit to the department. And the CAO has submitted a report and recommendation for approval.
We just got this report just now, so could you give us a quick summary of what this is all about?
Sure. The, this is to support the 2009 bond issue. You'll recall, we did one last year successfully for $850-odd million. There are three things going on in this one. The authorization to issue, the authorization to do a negotiated sale, sale, and the appointment of four different bankers, and senior bankers and a series of other bankers as junior bankers. This is sort of the middle bond issue of three that we expect to do to support the Bradley Terminal Reconfiguration.
So, this is all for the Bradley Terminal?
Well, this is for projects that are related to taxiways, but the entire envelope of projects that have to be done, if the Bradley Terminal is to be done on time, includes taxiway projects that are in this bond issue. We would expect to do a bond issue next year for the actual Bradley project. This is to deal with a new aircraft rescue and firefighting station that needs to be built, build some taxiways, also fix some of the old terminals at the airport in terms of elevators and escalators and other things.
Right. I guess the question would be, is this a good time to incur, you know, $1.6 billion in debt?
Well, just to be clear-
And our, well, yeah, it's $700 million of new money and $925 to refund-
Right.
Previously issued debt, but it's still $1.6 billion. Is the debt savings, is, are we, is that worth it?
On the refunding, we will only execute that authorization if there's real debt savings there on the refund.
And you haven't figured that out yet?
We'll know, because it's a tender offer structure, we'll know based on responses to the tender offer, whether it's executable or not.
Okay.
On the new money part of it, the two things that are going for us are, construction bids in this environment are really, really good, and 20% below estimates.
Okay.
And the interest rate environment is very favorable, even lower than in our 2008 issue. So, we're at all-time interest rate lows and very low construction costs, which is really why we want to press on.
Right. So, this was negotiated, did you say?
It will be.
It will be.
Negotiated action.
Okay.
Yeah.
With the underwriters that have already been-
This is designating those underwriters.
Okay. And so, when does that, when does that happen?
We expect to do the pricing, I think, in early November, and closing would be in December.
Okay. That's correct. All right. Well, we just have to wait to see what the market's going to look like at that time. No one, no one really knows.
Right.
And the sense of capital improvement projects, do you have a timetable and what projects we're looking at?
Well, these projects are to be completed by January 2012. And there's a series of projects that are follow-on to this that require some authorizations, specifically the Bradley reconfiguration, that also start being completed in 2012 and take a few years to roll out in phases.
What would be helpful for me is if you could give us a breakdown, what projects, where the money is going, and a sense of the timetable with the low end and the high end, just so that we get a better clarity of that.
Okay. Yep.
I'm good.
Okay. I just noticed a typo in the report for one of the underwriters. I believe it's E.J. De La Rosa. It's opposed to E.J. De La Rose. Am I-
Is it the CAO report or the?
That's what I'm looking at.
Or page three.
Isn't it D. J. De La Rosa?
I guess it's E.J. De La Rosa.
Good call. Thank you. I think you guys should correct that.
When we come back next, I'd like that breakdown.
Okay, no problem. Yep, we have it. We can just put it together in a form that's understandable.
Okay. Any other que, we do have a card on this. Arnold Sachs.
This is a picture in today's daily breeze. Fire engine swallowed up by sinkhole. That's what the Tom Bradley redevelopment has become, a sinkhole for bonds and money. I mean, the project started out at $3 billion.
Can I just ask you to hold this time, please? I don't think we should speak ill of the dead, okay? Those who passed. You said Tom Bradley? Okay.
Tom Bradley Terminal.
Okay. Then be specific.
Tom Bradley Terminal, sorry.
Thank you.
Sinkhole for funds.
I thought somebody died in the sinkhole when you said that.
The, now there's two more bonds. There was a $950 million bond authorized by the airport last year. You mentioned honesty being the best policy, Councilman Rosendahl.
Only policy.
And I'm concerned, because every time I ask about the $950 million bond that was authorized by the city for the original expansion of the Tom Bradley Terminal, I'm talking a foreign language. Don't know what happened with that. There's, buildings have been changed. We have the Tom Bradley West Terminal. What's the status of the Midfield Concourse? There's the building to the east of Tom Bradley. And it's more and more and more, there's no general plan. It's like mice in a maze. I'm just curious to know why there wasn't a better, with all the money that's been spent, and all the experts that have been hired, why there wasn't a better plan for the funding? I know that there's an economic downturn, but prior to the economic downturn, which is since 2001, I mean, there was plans for expansion in 1997.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you. Again, more answers for bad questions.
Thank you. Okay. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, adjourn.
Okay. Without objection. Item 10, I believe is a receive and file, but let's get, tell us what it is, and why we need to do this.
Item 10 is continued consideration of the Board of Police Commissioners' report proposing that the council ask the city attorney to draft an ordinance to require that owners of canines secure their pets in kennels or crates while in the terminal areas of Los Angeles, LAX. This item has been continued so that the police department and airport police could discuss and resolve some issues that initially surfaced. We've been advised now that the two departments are ready to present a revised ordinance to the Board of Airport Commissioners. And before the board can do that, the, this committee and council needs to release jurisdiction by receiving and file, filing this matter.
Do you understand that?
Yeah. Is it going to go back and-
Right. Okay, so, hi, good morning.
Good morning, council members.
Tell us why we're doing this.
Council members, good morning. My name is Captain Horace Frank with the LAPD Emergency Services Division. I've got Sergeant Christopher Holt, who's with the Bond Detection Canine Section. Some time ago, we recognized this as a necessity for the airport because of instances we've had in the past of civilian dogs lashing out at our working police dogs. And as a result, we recognize certainly there's a liability issue in part of the city in those instances, and also the situation whereby, once those instances have occurred, you basically render the police canines useless when it comes to odor sniffing, odor detection, because you have to move, take them out of service, and instead, they're just on a defensive basis. So, we came up with this recommended ordinance. The one concern, initially, there were provisions in the ordinance, in the proposed ordinance, to have the crate requirement inside the terminal areas, but also along the sidewalks.
Right.
And working with the airport.
Right.
We've negotiated the fact that we would be willing to concede not to extend the crate law to the sidewalks, because there's currently laws in place that require people to have their dogs on leash. But certainly, when it comes to working inside the terminal area, then those dogs should be in crates.
Okay. So, you've kind of worked on that compromise?
Yes.
Right. And tell us why we have to receive and file this ordinance. Who can tell us that?
Well, this is, you're receiving and filing the initial proposal that came from the police department, because they're going to revise it, they're going to present it to the Board of Airport Commissioners.
Mark Adams.
So, the police department forwarded this idea of the ordinance directly to the city council.
The police commission, police department forwarded it to the city council.
Right. But our airport police had some issues with it, so we're going to come back with a new one that takes into effect. So, we're going to receive and file the first one, and then hopefully, the next one that comes forward will have this compromise.
And at this point, the city attorney has drafted an ordinance.
When will that come to us?
We're expecting it to go to the Airport Commission in October.
Okay.
So, after that.
How, but how is that working right now in the inner terminals, if we don't have this ordinance on the book?
Well, right now, the airport, the airport has a policy in place requiring-
Okay.
Dogs in the, civilian dogs in the terminal areas inside to be crated.
Okay.
Problem with that is that there's no teeth to it. They cannot be enforced.
It's, the bark is bigger than the bite. Okay, so this gives you-
This would put some teeth to it.
I see. All right, so, I've got it. So, in the meantime, I mean, October seems like a long time for that ordinance to, I know it's like next month, but I'm worried that some of the issues that they just brought up are a problem.
It's, airport police have looked at it. It's, it's not a, in their opinion, it's not a very frequent problem, but it has occurred. And so-
All right. So, you can still pretty much say, it's the law around here that you keep that dog